Welcome to an open book with Harry Pacheco. Where our guests choose to be an open book. Sharing real impactful stories that are making a difference. Welcome to the show. Hello, welcome to another episode of Open Book with Harry Pacheco. We are so blessed to have Chairman Claire Maxwell here today.
Thank you, I feel blessed.
For Rutherford County Schools.
School Board, yes.
We have, you have helped me, for me, me being an author and moving here from California, kind of lit the fire under me again to be able to take Tennessee by storm with my anti bullying books and I'm doing that again. I'm back at it. Giving my books to schools and giving my books to different organizations that could spread such an awesome awareness and I want to thank you for that.
Well, I want to thank you. It was no happenstance that we met that day. It was a God thing. We're meeting, we're pumping gas at a gas station and we just start chatting. And you had just telling me your story about coming here from California and I said, welcome, welcome to the borough. As a person who, aside from about 10 years of my life, been here my entire life and love this place. Brought my children back here to raise them in this place and God just had a hand that day in making sure that you and I met. And we've talked several times. I'm one of your biggest supporters. I love your books.
Yeah, thank you so much.
It speaks to the heart of bullying is a real problem.
Absolutely.
And it only gets worse the older they get. So if we can stamp it out at a younger age, we can stop some of this. And I just love your books. I love the illustrations are beautiful and anything I can do to help you, I'm willing to do.
Well, you are doing it.
Well, thank you.
You are, you are helping me. So Claire, how long have you been a chairman?
I've been on chairman only for the last year.
Okay.
We, we choose our chairman at the end of August 1st to September. So the new one is coming up and I will be going for chair for a second year. I've been told that I need to do that. So I'm going to do that. I've enjoyed being their chairwoman. There have been some days that have been better than others, but I enjoy it. And, but I've been on the board since 2020. That's when I, that's when I was first rose my, my left hand and, and joined the board and so.
How was that journey?
It was a journey. I was working at Riverdale High School in 2019. And I was happy. I'd been there about three years, working in sped in the CDC program. And I loved those kids, but I saw some things that I didn't like with our school system and sped program and the high school that I was working at. I felt like we were going so fast. It was really kind of hard to wrap your hands around things. And then we were spending all of our time on focusing on the growth, not realizing that what's been here for years and years and years, like our older schools and our older programs might need some refurbishment. Because when you move to a new town, you come and you take a look at the bright shiny new penny, you're going to love that penny. And the other is going to look less than. And I love Riverdale and Oakland. There are two. They call them starter schools or when they changed, Central Magnet is one of the top schools in the, not only in the state, but in the country. It used to be a high school and when we decided to have, that we'd grown enough that we needed more than one high school, we made Riverdale and Oakland. Believe it or not, at the ends of the county. Hard to believe, yeah. Ends of the city, rather. So Riverdale and Oakland have been around since 1972. And aside from a few cosmetic things, they have an extra annex that they, they really, the, the core buildings have really never been really refurbished. And they were built with that concept back in the early seventies of openness and go outside and have lunch on the lawn. Heck, I hear then, not when I was in school, because I started school there in 1982. But in the seventies, the kids could leave, the seniors could leave, go to lunch and come back, which sounds crazy right now. Half the kids wouldn't even come back if you let them leave now. I can't even imagine that. But it was an open concept where you had, you went outside and you were covered with a metal partition, but you're still open to the rain, to the cold, to, you've got thousands of kids when the bell rings, going from building to building. That's not safe. Not only are your kids getting wet and getting rained on and freezing cold in the winter time, but it's not safe. So that was always in the back of my mind. We, someday it'd be nice, we need to fix this. We need to fix this. And because I feel like if we put the best people in the room together, we're smart enough that we can handle both. We can take care of our older schools, but we can still keep building the new schools that we need to tackle the growth. But I want to make sure that at the end of the day, that your zip code doesn't designate whether you are going to a good school or not. I want you, no matter what part of the city or part of the county you live in, to know you've got an excellent school up there. Excellent facilities, excellent programs, and you can be proud of the school that you go to. I don't want kids, if you want to go to another school, it's because you want to go to that school. It's not because you have to go to that school and that's the difference.
So I was telling my producer about how much passion you have for what you do.
Thank you.
And just those statements alone, it supersedes to what I was telling him. Am I right, Trent? The love that you have for the people, the love that you have for the kids that are, that are going to these high schools and, and different schools in Rutherford County, you have this serious passion about it. Where does that stem from?
Well, I feel like everything you go through, God can use that in some way. I did not know in 2013, when I lost my middle son, that God was going to use that down the road. Going to Riverdale High School in 2016, when my two youngest were seniors in high school and were, I was about to be an empty nester. God's plan was for me to go and work and give back what I've got and not just sit around and mope and be sad all the time. Because don't get me wrong, that was easy to do that first year. Every time my kids left in the morning to go to school, their junior year, I went upstairs and I just cried. And then I asked God, please give me a sign of what you want me to do to get out of this sadness. And then that's when one of my dear friends from church called me and said, hey, my EA, she turned in her notice. I said, you need to come work with me. You need to come to Riverdale. You've got too much to give to be sitting in the darkness. And the faith that she had in me and just that push was all I really needed because God was there telling me, you need to do this as well. And I had no background in special education, other than I did, I had four young boys under the age of five and I am pretty patient. So that's what, so I put my notice in at the school and even then the principal laughed. He said, he'd always told me, Ms. Maxwell, you're here all the time. You might as well get paid for it. So I came in, I said, I'm taking you up on your offer. I just put my application in to be a sped A in CDC. And he said, that's awesome. So next thing you know, next fall comes around, I tell my boys, don't be mad, but mama's going to be at your school every day. They grumbled a little bit, but then they realized that they needed something signed or they needed $20. There was mama right there. So it had its perks as well too. But it was great. My nephew was a freshman there and he has cerebral palsy. I also feel like God wanted me there to kind of help Jack. And so it was just, the kids were beautiful, beautiful kids. And it was just, I loved the people I worked with. It was the right thing and right to do. God's timing, everything in God's timing.
That is a touching story. I don't know if I shared this with you, but I too experienced loss. So that story right there about persevering through that loss develops great character. And through my loss, I lost my first wife. I was married. I lost her to leukemia and she was my high school sweetheart. At such a young age. I think I was only 24, 23 and she was 24. And she, we had, she battled leukemia and she was my whole world, you know? I mean, I known her since first grade. So I definitely understand persevering through hard times. But it shining a light and, and being purposeful about it, right? Knowing that there's something that has to come from this, right? And so I joined a group called Grief Share and I facilitated those classes to help me and my kind of growth and healing. Because I was struggling with that relationship, especially with God of knowing why, why was she taken away from me?
I can imagine.
And so, and I decided to facilitate Grief Share for many years. And so you took that kind of, I, I call mine, it's very unfortunate tragedy that happened to me, but I took that and I made it good to help others go through the same thing. And so I believe that you're doing that same thing now.
It, it's, it's been in the back of my mind ever since Mitchell died. I want to make him proud. And I know he would be, he's smiling up in heaven with my mama, with his nana, who passed away three years ago from Parkinson's. And she would tell me, Mitch will be so proud of you. And my own other sons, I have three other sons, Matthew, Michael and Manning and two sets of twins. And they loved their brother, but they have also said, Mike, Mitchell would be so proud of you. And my husband, when I decided I was going to run, I had never ran for anything in my life. I'm the last person in the world that you would ever think. And the guy I was taking on had been there for 16 years. And this is going to be hard. And a lot of people are like, I don't think you can do it. I said, well, I've got a plan. My husband, he's ex military. So he's, you know, we put up a map of my zone and he would say, these are your neighborhoods. This is what we're going to do. We're going to door knock it all. And I was pretty sure that the other fellow had not door knocked all of Zone 5. So, but growing up here, I knew I might have pockets. I grew up in several parts of Zone 5. And I said, you know what? I wonder if there's still any people around that, that know me, know me from Black Fox, when my kids went there. Know me from Riverdale, a large part of my zone, 85% of it went to Riverdale High School. And Riverdale was very supportive. When I told my parents there that I was running, the staff there, the parents, they were, you miss Maxwell, you go do it. And I took their, their desires, their wants, their wishes for a better Riverdale, a better Zone 5. And to just have someone that you could reach and call on the phone. I said, if I win this, I said, call me and we'll talk. And I'll try to do my best to make it better. I, I'm not going to be, I'm just a school board member. I'm not going to wave my magic wand and fix everything, but I can make it better. And low and behold, were we going into COVID. So it was a struggle, but we, we worked every day. We stopped what we were doing at three o'clock. Austin would stop what he was working on. We put on our T-shirts and our shorts that said Claire Maxwell for school board. And I put out, I had a bunch of yard signs. It was an investment. We, we knew in order to win, we had, not only did I have to sell myself, sell my passion, sell my vision, but I had to put the work in. So I door knocked over 2,500 homes. The sad thing is I found out how many people don't vote. That's the saddest thing. When you have a list of everyone who's voted in an August general, and when I ran in 2020, it was nonpartisan. So I didn't care if you were a D or an R. I just knew you were a voter. And this says, last time, last August, you voted. So I'm going to your house. Sometimes that person would have died or they didn't live there anymore. So I would go ahead and talk to the person that was there. And I figured out if they had a sign for somebody else in the yard, then they're a voter. So, but we would go on till eight o'clock at night and I was exhausted. It was hot, lost 10 pounds. That was a good part. But everywhere I went, everyone was receptive. They were all like, no, I don't know. I just happened to start it off with, hello, my name is Claire Maxwell. I'm running for school board. Do you know who your school board rep is? And 99.9% of the time, they said, no, I have no idea. I said, that's a shame. He's been up there for 16 years. My name is Claire Maxwell. Let me introduce myself. Lifelong Rutherford County again. Went to Riverdale High School. And Riverdale High School is the, is the, is the only high school other than Holloway, which is a choice school. But it's the only zoned high school in this district. And I want to help you guys. And do you think things are great? No, we don't think these are great either. And I would listen to whatever their desires or their wants and I would tell them what I want to do. I said, you know, I think it's great that a county's growing, but if we want to stay a really good, high marked school system, we need to make sure that none of our kids get left behind. I said, you can't build a school and give it every bell and whistles. And then you need to take, you take a good portion of the best and the brightest from the older school and rezone it to that school. You got to look backwards. What have you done to the school you just left? Have you hurt that school? Have you taken too many people from that school? Have you hurt the demographics of that school? You have to be cognizant of all of that. And at that time, there was too much, I believed cherry picking. They would go in and these, they would pick this neighborhood and that neighborhood and I want this one and I want that one. So when we, when I got on the board, the first thing I said was, we need to hire an outside agency to come in and do this. So people know that we're doing it a fair way and we're not just cherry picking. And I'm really proud that every time we've rezoned, we've used an agency and we haven't just cherry picked this and that. And, but it was, it was a long process, but I felt momentum going in to the stretch. And, but a lot of people wanted me to have a big party and I was like, I don't know. What if I lose? Then they're going to see me cry. So I sat at home and my husband went up to the election commission with a good friend of mine. And he called me, honey, he said, early results are in. I said, you're up big. I said, there's no way he can catch you. And I said, what do you mean? I said, you've won. I said, but it's only 7:30. How do you know? He goes, no, no, you beat him in early voting by such margins. There's no way he can catch you. And so I ended up winning by like 67, 67 to like 30, what 32, 33 something?
That's amazing.
It was a lot. And I have to thank so many communities. My, every school board member has, their zone is three county commissioners are tied to it. Mine is Alan 17, 18 and 19. I have Alan McAdoo, I have Jeff Phillips and have Chanto. And he laughs, I can't say his last name. I'm sorry, it's Laotian. It's Stunt, Stunt, I can't say it. But anyhow, but Chanto is a great guy.
I'm sorry, what was his name?
Chanto, Chanto Sirathong. I think it's Chanto Sirathong. He's awesome.
Chanto Sirathong.
He came here from Laos in, I believe, mid seventies. A lot of our churches sponsored with the Cambodian Laotian war.
Absolutely.
And I remember, I remember them coming when I was a little girl, because I was born in 67. So I was probably seven or eight years old and I remember all these immigrants coming and all these Baptist churches, South Side and First Baptist. We opened up our churches to help them. And he, he was an integral part of that community that came here. And so he was one of the first people when I decided I was going to run for school board, I went right to Chanto and said, Chanto. And I knew he lived behind Black Fox in a neighborhood that I grew up in till I was 11 years old, which is called Tottington. And I went right to him and said, I'm running for school board. And I knew he was really good friends with my uncle, who had been a county commissioner until he got sick. And so Chanto took his place. And so I went to him and I told him, I'm running for school board. I would really love your support. He goes, you've got it lady. And so that meant a lot. And then I went to Alan McAdoo, who is the longest standing commissioner and the longest standing African American on the county commission. And he lives right behind me on Tottington. So I went to him and told him I was running and I said, I would love your support. And he says, you've got it. And even the guy that was my other one, Jeff Phillips, and I knew he was friends with Terry. So I knew I had to, I just told him, I said, I just want to let you know, I'm running for school board. I know you're friends with Terry. But if I win, I want to be a good partner with you. And honestly, since I've been on the board, Jeff's been amazing. I'm going to miss him. Both Jeff and Chanto are stepping down, running for reelection. So I'm going to have potentially two new people. So, but the support from my zone, I couldn't have done it without them. I mean, they got behind me. I had people wanting signs all the time, wanting, hey, I don't even, you don't live in my zone though. I don't care. I don't care. I'm going to tell everybody they need to vote for Claire Maxwell. And without that, I couldn't, I couldn't have done it. I will never forget the outpouring of support that I've, and they continue to show me to this day.
I think one, one of the things that we talked about every time we, we like, when we do kind of like talk about my books and generally to see how each other's doing, you always, always say that there's so many great people that support you.
They are.
That's kind of like, that's like you're, you could tell it comes from a, like a really genuine place.
I have old teachers that reach out to me to tell me, you're doing a great job. And there's no reason for them to even be following the school board. They haven't had kids in the school system in years. But that's one thing I've realized, there are a lot of eyes on Rutherford County. Be it for good or bad, something, since COVID, we have been in the eye of the storm, you know? Anything that happens in Rutherford County, I mean, the New York Times has showed up to some of our meetings during the, should we mask? Should we not mask? Should we close? Should we not close? And I'm really proud we never closed. We, we, we shut down in March, like everybody did from COVID until the end of the year. But when we came back in the fall, we wore masks for one year from like, and that was only for the protection of, I wanted to make sure that all of our kids came into, came into the building. And if that made mamas feel better, if that made some of our kids feel better and it made some of our teachers feel better, I was willing to do it for a short period of time. And then the governor passed his, you could wear it or not wear it. And so basically, you know, we, we wore a mask for only for a short time. If you wanted to wear a mask the following year, that was on you. But I wanted to listen to all my constituents, but I wanted, I knew that most of my kiddos could not do distance learning. It wasn't going to work for them. And I knew my sped kiddos couldn't do it. So one thing I was really glad that I was on the board, even though I'm no, I'm not a sped expert, but I do, I'm cognizant of some of the needs that they have is when we had to periodically close one of our schools down for too many cases of COVID and we would shut down for, you know, we would go on distance learning for a little bit. I made sure that unless there was, because at that time, the CDC kids, the, who had been very integrated in the rest of the school were not. We were keeping them because some of them have some medical needs that would, that COVID would have been really dangerous for them. So they were isolated and were not intermingling like they had been before. So unless there was an actual, you know, outbreak of COVID in the CDC classroom, keep it open. Let those kids get their services, because a lot of them don't realize, those kids get PT services, vision services. There's a lot going on. And so I was able to say, hey, if we've got to close this high school down or this middle school down, let's leave that open. So at least if it's not affected, let those kids get their services. And that's something, I don't think if I had been on the board, highlighting that, that would have happened.
Absolutely.
And we also have a brand new sped director who's been there probably two years. That's going on her third year, who has made amazing inroads. She is just top of the line.
For, for those who don't know, can you tell us about like what sped offers and what they, what it entails?
Okay. Well, if you're in, sped is a lot of things. Gifted kids are under sped. ELL is under, is under sped, but special populations, but the CDC or now they call it structured setting is for those kids that a lot of them have are low ID and need extra supports. And, and can't be in a regular classroom all the time. We do get them out. We do. I used to take three or four kids and we'd go to a biology class and we'd go to an art class and we'd go to, their favorite class was this nutrition class. The nutrition teacher was fabulous and she would pair each child up with one of her seniors. So, and kind of like a mentorship, but they learn slower and they, they, they learn in little bits. And then maybe they can't learn at the level that the other Gen Ed kids are, but they still need somebody there to help them. And so by structured setting, we have them there, we, we, we teach them at their level. Cause every kid can grow. It may be from not as much growth as that kid over there, but every kid can grow. And so I've seen it. I've seen a kid who came in who couldn't write their name. And at the end of the year, they're writing their name. They, they couldn't read anything, maybe and all of a sudden they can read a few, a few words. And, and it's, but the major growth they give is socially and emotionally. And the, the confidence that they, that they get from going to school and being with their friends and being cheered on by their teachers. You can do this.
It's an awesome program.
So it, it is, and it, it basically it's a safety net, basically for these kids. We just, you know, they need a soft place to land, to feel, you know, encouraged to go and take on the challenges that school is going to throw at them. And going to a biology class is kind of scary. But going with me, I've tried to make it a little less scary. And I have to honestly tell you, the Gen Ed kids, this isn't like when you and I were in school. And we were kind of like scared of the kids, you know, we didn't really know what to say to them. That, that's not happening anymore. By far and long, the kids at the, the Gen Ed kids at school, welcome, welcome these special kids and want to be with them and want to help them. And it's, it's really, really good thing to see.
They're integrated really well.
Absolutely, absolutely. And they love pep rallies. Pep rallies at Riverdale High School, the sped kids rule. They even have their own pom poms and they love cheerleaders.
That is awesome. So I want to talk, talk about you just before my next question.
Okay.
So Trent, I want to tell you how awesome Claire Maxwell is. We had a huge event at Bel Air and it was called the Connect, Connect Camp. We were, I just want to explain to the listeners and the viewers, how much you are the real deal. So we're walking through the facility and there's people that are, that are introduced, you know, to you as the chairman. And she was intent, she was just really listening to people's needs. Even though obviously she's, she's for the people and you feel that sincerity. And I just can't, I can't say that enough. Like, and she's very, very humble. She doesn't say she's the chairman. She just says, hey, I'm for you, for the people. And so that's something I noticed. But another humble thing is that you come from a prominent family of, of lawyers, of, of.
I'm very proud of my daddy and my uncle and my grandpa. My, my grandpa went to Washington DC and worked in the Truman and Kennedy administrations. And he was executive secretary for the Federal Trade Commission. But he was a humble man who lived next to the postman. So he, he, you don't, he did not consider, he was proud of the work that he did. But he, he wasn't someone that was, thought he was better than. And he instilled that in his sons. And my uncle Jim Daniel, who is recently passed away, he also had Parkinson's, was an attorney. And he was a social security lawyer. And my dad took a different path. My dad is the arguer of the family. And he was a criminal defense and workman's comp and personal injury, but both my, my, my grandfather moved here when I was a little girl, when he retired. And then my uncle Jim and his family moved here also when I was younger. So I enjoyed the fact that I had so much family here. And heck, we used to live next door when I lived in Tottington. My uncle Jim and Aunt Susan and their three kids lived next door to us. I mean, that's, that's rare for that to happen. But yes, they were, I didn't realize when I was a little girl, what important work my, my dad did. But he really wanted to help people and I worked for him when I was in college and, and home on the summertime. And, and that's when I got to see all the people that my dad had. He has such a good heart. I know lawyers get such bad wraps, you know? But that wasn't my dad. My dad did not, was not one of those $300 or $400 an hour lawyers who, 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 you know, was all about, give me the money, give me the money. That was not him. Half the time he would either cut his fee or not take a fee when he needed to, because he had spent months, you know? And he just, he just had a good heart for this. And I used to laugh. I said, Dad, I said, if we keep going this way, you said, you're one step above legal aid. And he goes, oh, it's okay. I know at the end of the day, that I've helped more people doing it this way. So.
So there's not, not, no mistake in where you're at today. It's the DNA lineage of your family.
Yeah. And my, and my mom, she held things together because my dad, you know, he had his own business and, and his own law firm. And, and that took a lot of time away from us. But my mom was just the best. She was the backbone of our family. A godly woman. I knew when she was passing, I knew that, I knew where she was going. She knew where she was going. And I knew when she went to heaven, that she'd be looking down on us and watching us from above with all assurances. Because she came here when, to go to college when she was old. And she went to church at First Baptist Church, which is now my church still. And she met this strapping Captain Scott Daniel, who was 26 years old and a JAG officer at Seward Air Force Base in Smyrna. And God brought them together and they had four kids. And God brought them together and they had four kids and their oldest is me. And uh, I just, I had such good parents, uh. They are, they made me who I am today. That and some of the uh, trials and tribulations that we all go through. And uh, I feel like I'm a better person because of what I've gone through. And being on the school board, having the background that I have of someone, not only who grew up here. Went to local schools, believes in public school gap. If you want to send your kid to private school, but that's okay too. I get it, I get it. Uh, but I'm a public school kid and I want to make sure we have, we continue to have the finest public schools. But I've used all of that, losing a son who accidentally died of a drug overdose, you know? He didn't know that a combination of drinking and taking an Oxycontin pill would kill him. He did not. He was a good kid. I can use all of that because I've been through real world experiences that lots of my families have been through. I had people call me. One day, I, I don't tell everybody about Mitchell. I don't tell everybody about. All the stuff that we've been through as a family. Uh, my, my, my other sons took it really, really hard. And there were times. When they were in high school and college, that life wasn't so good. I was tearing my hair out and praying that God would show them the way because they were angry, angry at God, angry at Mitchell. Angry at why we, this was happening to us. And I kept praying and saying, God, you're going to fix this. You are going to fix this, because every time I tried to fix it, I made a mess of it. I said, I'm gonna give it to you. And slowly but surely, on his timing, God has turned everything around. My boys are in a good place. I'm in a good place. My husband is in a good place. And you know, I don't know what the future holds, but I do know that if we focus on. God and our faith. He will take care of it. And uh, so I enjoy being on the school board. Uh, I do feel like I represent. A lot of families that have had some hardships, but have persevered. I try to give them hope.
Yeah, and this is that perseverance part we talked about. And how much you are, you persevered through all the trials and tribulations that we were talking about. And now it's, it's, you are spreading it out to other people and helping them and, and.
I'm trying.
And I, I believe that you are. Um. I have to ask you, is there any new schools?
Yes, yes. We're opening up a new school on Friday. Poplar Hill Elementary School. It is on Baker Road. It is um. Goes all the way back to the Revolutionary War. To uh, Captain, I believe it Captain L. Beatty. Uh, they even, uh, the, uh, I'm in the DAR and uh, one of our DAR chapters. They had a uh, a nice uh, about two months ago, had a plaque put back up. That had been knocked down when they started building the school. And they're also famous for, do you know uh, the, the movie Charlotte's Web? Okay, well, when they remade Charlotte's Web, Wilbur came from the Beatty Farm. So Wilbur is buried there. So uh, yes, so uh, when I'm supposed to um, say a few words on Friday. At the dedication and the ribbon cutting of the brand new Poplar Hill Elementary School, which we desperately need. But, and I'm going to hearken back to the land being important and this area important and goes back to the, to the Revolutionary War and the. Begins of this country, but it's also the resting place of Wilbur, so we need to respect it.
That is exciting. First of all, um, this is your first year as chairman. And then you're opening a new school. Um, is there any events that you want to co-sign that are upcoming?
Well, we, uh, well, we, uh, I do have to say, not only are we having the uh, elementary school, but the middle school has already broken ground too. Right next to it. And that will, uh, really alleviate the overcrowding in the Stewart's Creek and Blackman area, which are hot. They, those areas have been going crazy the last five or six years, if not longer. But um, one of the biggest things we have coming going and near and dear to my heart is Riverdale. Is ready to have its ribbon cutting August seventeenth at two o'clock. And Oakland will be about four to six weeks behind it. It's just a little bit behind it. And so they will have their ribbon cutting and it is a total, total redo two point O of the school, uh, completely. They've got thirty new classrooms, brand new auditoriums, um, new culinary arts uh, program. Uh, they've got cosmetology at Riverdale, they've got an honors college. Oakland's gotten some, some needed space for their robotics programs and for the, the science building. Classrooms are large. It is, you're not gonna know these are fifty-year-old schools. This is to take them for another fifty years. And so I'm really proud of that. So I will be uh, at those ribbon cuttings. And we've already had um, a new addition, a new wing come on Smyrna High School. And also in the progress is a three-story addition on Laverne High School. So I'm really excited. Not only have I been able to help facilitate the growth of two new schools and. Probably three or four, we're looking at some high schools, so we can, that we can do. But I've also been able to basically. Make the right needed uh, refurbishments on all of our older schools, all four of our older schools. Smyrna, Laverne, Riverdale and Oakland.
So you've been on the board less than a year. And all those things are happening.
Well, no, I've been on since twenty twenty.
Oh, twenty twenty.
Twenty 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 is when I started, but the first two years, it's kind of like we were in quicksand. During covid, nobody wanted to build. I had this idea about redoing our older schools and making them viable. Because I saw families coming to Murfreesboro and totally ignoring the older schools. And wanting to go to only to the newer areas. And it was making those areas even more crowded. And so um, but it took about a year and a half to convince the board. And then we had the change in directors and uh. But then I went to the county commission and I worked really hard and uh, a lot of them saw. And had faith in this project. And so they said, sure, let's do it. So, and it took about two years they've been working on this, so. But yeah, I felt like the first two years, we were kind of in quicksand. We were going nowhere.
Well, everybody was.
And everybody was. We were better off because at least we were open. And our kids were coming to school. And another thing I didn't say is, we basically, if. If you were, if your kid was failing by Christmas that first year, we were telling you to come on in, you need to come on in. So, yeah, because we knew it was gonna get really, really hard. We didn't want them to have a lost year. So the only way we were gonna be able to get them up to where they could finish that year and go to the next year. Is if they were in, in class. Now, don't get me wrong, some of these kids really enjoyed it. I would not have enjoyed it, but some of them did. And since then, we have our virtual school. Which a lot of our kids and do enjoy, uh, it's growing every year. Um, but the virtual school appeals to those kids. That feel like they are a square peg in a round hole, you know, or maybe they're uh. They're not enjoying being at a large, large high school. So I'm glad we have that option as well. And they come in on Fridays, so they have that community. So they're not just all spread out and only online. They do come in and uh, they even have a mascot. They have their own principal. They have a, so um, Ms. Supercan is a wonderful principal. And uh, they are uh, housed at the back of Holloway. So, but, so that, people forget we have that one, but that, that's a good school as well. And uh. So I'm proud of that school as well. I want to make sure that we have something for everyone. So when they say choice, when the governor says we're choice, we have lots of choices. We have lots of choices in Rutherford County.
So I want to tell you something. So as you know, um, I do write anti-bullying books and I have, I had. Cyrus's Cyberbully came out. Um, I'm partners with a, a cyber book, I mean, a cyber bullying. It's like this tech company out in California. And so they gave me um, a donation to give to books. To libraries, um, to different schools. And I'm able to meet like the, the, the directors from these libraries. Um, some of the school librarians that are in the public schools. Um, but mostly like the libraries and then different after-school programs and things of that nature. When I bring up your name to know that you support this, these books and things of that nature, their faces light up.
I love our librarians.
So I want to tell you this from firsthand that um. You have their support um, when you do um, go for another, is it a reelection, right? And so all of them, all of them love you as, as a chairman of the board of, of Rutherford County. Like you can hear it, the sincerity in their voices, um, their faces light up. So you've made an impact this year. So I'm just letting you know that there's. And I hate to say this, but there's no doubt in my mind that you have. Most of Murfreesboro's vote on you being chairman again, so. Thank you. I just want to let you know that. Um, but here's what I want to transition to. Is there any events that we should check out, um, that, you know, that we don't know about? That you want to put in, on this platform and for us to know about more about, like this, you had this camp.
Yes, Camp Wonder, yes. Camp Wonder just happened, uh, it's the sixth year of Camp Wonder. Uh, it's a high school age fourteen to twenty-two. Uh, and most of the kids are in CDC structured setting at their high school. And uh, it started six years ago, it Riverdale High School was the first year. And then I got on the board and I was able to move it to, they allow me to have it at different high schools. I move it around just to kind of help. With transportation, because if you live in the north end of town, it's gonna be easier if it's at Smyrna or Laverne than it is if it's gonna be all the way. You know, up on the other side of town at uh, Oakland or Riverdale. So um, but I enjoy it. Uh, it's, it's, it's a passion of mine. Uh, it's something that I, I walked in. I talked to Tara McDougall, who is the CFO at um, at uh, Discovery Center. And I went and talked to her s- six and a half years ago and said, hey, have you thought about having a camp for older high school age kids? There's not that many opportunities. And if we did it at a low, low cost, and if I could get most of the, the workers to be volunteers. Do you think we could make this happen? And she said, let's sit down. It's been on our hearts as well, because they were wanting the uh, Discovery Center to be. Inclu- more inclusionary. And so, and uh, so it just evolved from there. And uh, the, the school has been, schools have been great about allowing me to have the um. Having the camp on their campuses. And each principal has been just so great. Uh, Sherry Southland at Smyrna, this, we had it at uh. It was uh, July seventh through the eleventh. And they gave me two or three rooms. They gave me a, a pass to the gym. So our kids could hang out in the gym. And uh, so she just, it, anything we needed, they would check on us. Hey, just anything you need. Can we get you anything? And I was like, nope. Much experienced church stepped up and provided lunches every day. So we didn't have to go out and get lunches. Uh, I didn't want that to be something, because in the summertime, it's hard, you know? The kid may end up not wanting to come, or the mom may be hesitant to bring them if, oh, I didn't make a lunch this morning. I don't, you know. I don't want to have any reason why your child couldn't come here today, other than the fact that I wish I had a bus, but I don't have a bus, so you're gonna have to bring the child. But if you can get the kid here, don't worry. Everything's gonna be taken care of. So that, I'm just so blessed that over the years, as, as the campus just gotten bigger and bigger and bigger and more notice. Uh, more people have stepped up to want to help us because we do this camp on a shoestring budget. Uh, we don't get any grant money uh, uh, from anyone. And it's just there, it's just individual donations. And uh, I'm very, my church even stepped in this year and, and gave a donation. Yeah, they're, everyone's a volunteer except for, we do have to pay Discovery Center for two of their um. Employees come in the mornings and do two or three hands-on projects. And we have to buy the materials for those projects. But other than that, everybody else is a volunteer. And that's why we're able to do it at such a low cost. And it just means so much to these, these, we had two new um, EAs that came this year to work. At my camp, uh, and they'd never done it before. And the first thing they said was, I'm here next year, put me down. They, you end up working the camp, you get just as much as the chi- children who are attending the camp. Because these kids, they steal your heart. And uh, it's just a wonderful, wonderful time. And I love it very much. I will tell you, I'm really pleased that. Since I have been acquainted with Discovery Center and we walked in that fateful day and said, hey, let's design a camp between the two of us. They have all access nights, but I, which I believe is either the first or second Tuesday of the month. Where they allow sped children and their families to come in and play at the uh, Discovery Center. At no cost, which is a big, big deal. And they've made a lot more of their uh, uh. Different centers more inclusionary. They have a chill zone. Uh, they have restrooms that can handle full-size adult. Changing table. I mean, I'm really proud of, of the things that they've done, um, that. That they've been made aware of and they've been very receptive to. In fact, we met this morning and had our uh, debrief. What, what can we do to make it better next year?
So there is gonna be a.
There will definitely be next one. I am, actually, I haven't talked to them yet, but I would like to have it at Rockville High School. So I met, uh, one of the helpers was from Rockville. And she was like, we need to have it at my school. I said, I would love to have it at Rockville, cause I haven't had it. It's a little far out, but you know, there might be a lot of families out that area that, that haven't been able to come. But having it at Rockville will help them.
So I want to tell you, this is why now Claire Maxwell is about the community and that we should vote her in again. I have a thing that we do here. It's called four things that you're grateful for. Um, obviously, we know you're grateful for God. Um, there's no doubt in my mind, your faith is probably your number one priority and everything else follows that. Your husband, your kids, um, they're probably number one on that list. Is there three things or four other things that you're grateful for?
Support. I would say support from friends, family. Um, I appreciate uh. The time that I have now to do this. I think, like I said, God's timing, God has made, cause my life's pretty full. But God's made sure that I have the time to put in to do this. Um. Uh, there's so much that I'm grateful for. Um, I'm grateful for the people I work with on the board. They've been very, very supportive.
Is there any shout-outs that you have on?
Shout out to Francis Rosales, Stan Vaught, uh, uh, Caleb Tidwell, Tammy Sharp. And uh, I'm from Butch Vaughn and uh, Katie Darby. The, the, the current board is very, very supportive. And I want to tell you, Sheila Bratton and Cory Young were also very supportive. Of, of not only my uh, my camp, but of my, my ideas, my visions, things that I've wanted to do. Uh, now if Sheila's an old guard, she was a teacher here. And so she's, she's, she's been around longer than I have, but she, now she would tell me if she thought, Claire, that is not gonna happen. So I appreciated her honesty. But she's, for the most part, she's very supportive and a big cheerleader. Um. She and I and Francis and Butch, um, just started a um. Are you familiar that the city schools have a city schools foundation? Of which they're able to get the community to uh, contribute monies. That outside of what the city school budget affords, these teachers can put in for these grants. Some of them are only like a two or five hundred dollar grant, all the way up to like fifteen hundred. For specific things that their classroom, that these teachers would like to, to buy, cause it's expensive being a teacher. So um, but we were able to start our own foundation, the Rutherford County Schools Foundation, which is mirrored. Very similar to uh, the City Schools Foundation. And uh, I'm very proud of that. And we've just gotten uh, our board together. We've had, we've been around since uh, March was our first meeting. And we just had three or three or four, three or four new members join us. And uh, they're very excited to be a part of this uh, too. And we want to set it up where we can. Provide things for those classrooms that need those extra supports. We want to be there for them. So if it, even if it's just five hundred dollars, we want to be able to raise the funds. Um, we uh. We've got some really good people on our board that are really heavy hitters in the community. And so hopefully, we'll be able to raise those funds and we can start distributing the funds in the next two or three years. And so hopefully, we'll be able to raise those funds and we can start distributing the funds in the next two or three years.
How do you, how would a person uh donate to that?
Well, that's a good question. We don't even have a bank account yet. So but uh I do believe we are fixing to be uh we Jeffrey uh he's also going to be our attorney. He's the board attorney, but he's also going to be, because you have to have a lawyer. When you set up a foundation, you gotta be, you have to have a lawyer. So uh he and our new treasurer are supposed to be setting up a five oh one three C. And uh we should be ready to go, I'm hoping, in the next couple of months.
Okay, so we can look out for that.
Absolutely. And obviously, I think you should be able to make a check out to Rutherford County Foundation.
Okay, so it's Rutherford County.
Schools Foundation.
So I want to ask you if you had to pick an organization or more than one, what organization would you shout out right now that they're doing great things? They are spreading the positive?
And I tell you right now, Boys and Girls Club.
There you go.
My good friend Cheryl Chestnut. We go to church together.
City?
Uh we uh We go to church together. Yeah, Boys and Girls Club is is not far from here. Yeah, it's that, it's right behind Premier Six. And so uh yeah, that she has taken over that, I don't know how many years ago, but she's doing a phenomenal job.
Boys and Girls.
The Boys and Girls Club, because they serve so many in this community. And you'll see the buses picking them up at the schools and bringing them back. And uh they have a couple of fundraisers to hear that and they bring in some heavy hitters too. I think uh I think one time they even had Peyton Manning come in. Yeah, it was it was a big deal, so. Yes, she has a good heart. And she she's been supportive of me and I'm sending it back out to you. She, Boys and your local Boys and Girls Club, or if you're in Rutherford County, your Rutherford County Boys and Girls Club, they do tremendous work. And a friend of mine that I went to a school with, uh worked there for like, I don't know, over twenty years. John Burge. And he worked in the cafeteria. And he's a good boy, a good man too, so. Yeah, so uh yeah, I would say Boys and Girls Club, definitely. There are a lot of good groups here, but definitely Boys and Girls Club.
Is there a second one you want to give a shout out to? Well, we get, Boys and Girls Club is great.
They are great. Greenhouse Ministries is also Greenhouse Ministries, because they provide not only uh uh resources for these um these families that that need with whether where it be, you know, clothes. Uh they can help rebuild your life. But they also have parenting classes. They have uh economic classes about, you know, getting fi- financial literacy, how to make a budget. So they try to make sure that families, you know, have what they need going forward to um to pull themselves up and stay that way, so.
All right, Claire, I want to tell you something before we we close out this uh interview. We had, we so far had a couple guests and and we look forward to having you here today.
Thank you.
Number one is you're doing so much for the Rutherford County Schools. You're doing so much for the children, your community service, as even though you're Claire Maxwell, Chairman, Rutherford County, you still volunteer for the community. Um you're still a servant. You have a heart of gold. Um there was a person that lost his job recently. We were passing by and he worked for the school district and you wanted to do something for that person. And you gave him your cellphone number. This is what we're getting, folks, of of as a chairman. Her service, her kindness, her willing to help a person in need um when it comes to um generally anything. So this is the person we have as our chairman on the board of Rutherford County. And I believe that she should serve the next twenty years, if it was up to me.
My husband would not like that.
But um
I appreciate it. That's that's very kind of you.
Well, this is, I'm being real. Um I work um in the community service. I've been partners up with the DAR program. I partner so with Give Every Child A Chance for After School Programs. Um so I know what it is for an individual like yourself to give, um to have a volunteer heart, to have a servant heart. And and you just have it. I've been um been a public speaker for about ten years. Talking to thousands of kids about anti bullying, about um you know, teaching about acceptance. And I just want to say um throughout the people I have met through through my life and these type of organizations that are helping the community, that are that are lifting up um our children of the future. You are the right person for the job for Rutherford County Chairman.
Well, thank you.
And I just want to thank you.
I enjoy my job.
For your service.
Thank you so much.
And I'm very blessed to have you as a guest. Uh Trent, you agree? Yeah, so. Yeah, so um we're just blessed to have you.
For having me. I enjoyed this very much and you made it very easy to talk to.
Thank you. And we're closing out. Thank you for another episode of Open Book with Hari Pacheco. Thank you for listening to another episode of Open Book with Hari Pacheco. Be sure to like, share, follow, subscribe, and leave us a five star review. We'll see you on the next one.